Mayor, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our joint budget work session with Hopewell City Public Schools and City Council this evening. I would like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor Randolph.
Here.
Counselor Holloway.
Here.
Counselor Gore. Counselor Gore.
Here.
Counselor Denton.
Here.
Counselor Palam.
Here.
Mayor Bennett, you have six present, one absent.
Thank you. Mr. Cuffey.
Sure. Ms. Truel, would you please do roll call, Madam Clerk?
Do. Mrs. Johnson. Ruth Johnson. Mr. Reiver.
Here.
Ms. Heisler.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
And Mr. Cuffey.
Here.
Thank you. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Reiver to lead us in prayer and Counselor Randolph to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day of grace, thankful for the opportunity to come before you and ask for your blessing and grace as we discuss a budget for the coming period. We pray that you'll guide and lead our discussions. We seek your wisdom. We seek your blessing that we can serve the children of Hopewell and our citizens and that which they will contribute to the future, that we can give them the best and that which they have need of in the days to come. Provide for us your grace and we embrace those less fortunate than we. There are those that have lost loved ones. There are those that find themselves under doctor's care. There are even those who suffer under the virus and we pray that you'll provide for each what's timely and needful for body, soul, and spirit. We ask that you'll prosper our ways now and accept our thankfulness. We ask this Father in thy son's name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me, anybody on the board who would like to, as we recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And.
United Republic of America. One nation under God. Liberty.
Justice.
Justice.
I will now turn the work session over to here, Mr. Cuffey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I guess we'll have a presentation or discussion by our superintendent, Dr. Melody Hackney.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And before I begin, I just want to tell you all how wonderful it is to be with you tonight. This has been a crazy year and while I can't see all of your faces, it just feels good to fellowship with you. It's been a weird 13 months and I'm excited to be here tonight and both talk about our budget process as well as the status of our schools in spite of COVID and the virus. So anyway, it's great to hear you, see you, and be with you tonight. We're going to follow the same procedure that we have historically, especially for this first meeting. We're going to just give you the nuts and bolts of what we think we have, what we think we need, what we, how that mathematically works in terms of what we would like to respectfully request of the city council in addition to the revenues that we already have for next year and then see where it takes us. We certainly expect to have an additional meeting at least like we have historically, but tonight we just want to give you the nuts and bolts and I think that, I hope that you will be pleased since I believe you received some information while we were on spring break, or I was marrying my only daughter, getting her married a couple of weeks ago, but we've made some updates to that based on our current projections for savings, based on information that we are hopeful about with the surplus that is anticipated with the 18 CAFR. So we've updated the budget request form that we sent you. So Janelle English, I think, should have rights. She's going to post the revised worksheet and then I'm going to walk us through it. So Janelle, can you do that?
Yeah, it looks like I need permission to share the screen.
Okay.
I just stopped share, so I think you can, you have that access now.
Okay. It should be up now.
Okay, can we make it any bigger? Or I gotta get some better glasses?
Is that good?
That's, will work. Okay, so in keeping with just our typical procedures, we want to share with you what we believe we need for this next fiscal year in new monies. And I will offer explanations. I'll answer questions obviously at any point, so just stop me if you need to. But so in addition to our regular level budget of this year, we are requesting 3.2-ish million dollars in new expenditures and I will outline each of those. There are only five or six of them. The first is the governor's recommended and almost funded 5% raise for teachers and all SOQ positions in the Commonwealth. We will receive approximately 1.7 million dollars in new money and most of that, new state money, and most of that is dedicated to the raise for SOQ positions. But as you all know, when the state recommends a pay increase, it's only for those positions that they fund in the standards of quality and there is always a difference for the remaining potentially non-essential, although they're all essential, positions that are not required or mandated as a part of the standards of quality. So the total cost for all employees to receive a 5% raise is approximately, almost nine million, excuse me, $2 million, 1.985926. And I'll show you how much revenue, new revenue we're expecting to fund that. A little caveat for this is that if we don't give the raise, we can't have the money. So anytime the state is willing to fund a raise for teachers and especially during these times, we are strong advocates that we go ahead and do that. So that's the 1.9-ish million dollars. As you all know, since I got here almost six years ago, we were way, way behind market and regional averages in virtually every class or every compensation classification of our employees in the school district. So as you may remember, we worked very closely with our superintendents association, our school board association to perform a formal study and designed a four-year phase in of the recommendations to get those all classifications to the average in the region. Now, again, that was four years ago. I can tell you now, we're behind again, but that's, you know, it is what it is. But we, our board made a commitment to our employees that apparently we had done this before historically and probably pre-most of my current board members. But so we had told employees how below the averages they were, but then we weren't able to find the money to implement the recommendations of the study. So we have, and we're very proud of this, we've been successful in, over the last five years in following through with implementing three of the four phases. The final phase, you may remember, last year we delayed simply because of the circumstances. And this year, we really feel strongly that we need to move forward with that, make right on our promise to our employees and really kind of close that chapter. That, at that point, every employee classification in the district will have been brought up to the average of the region for all position classifications. So the cost of that, for that last phase, is approximately $600,000 and that figure is outlined there. The next is, we have a number of, I believe it's five, five special ed compliance officers that are working really hard to keep us in compliance with federal law. And there's a lot going on right now in special ed. I know many of you are familiar with the J-LARK study that has shown that we've got some tremendous areas of need to improve our services to our students with disabilities statewide throughout the Commonwealth. And this is a relatively low-budget item, but we think it's high priority. We would like to move those compliance officers from 210-day contracts, which is currently 10 more than our current teacher contract, to 20 more non-instructional days at the cost of approximately $6,000 per contract. So a total cost to the district of $30,000, but we think a significant return on investment, especially during that time in the summer and when they would not be under contract and compliance is still, is still essential. The two special education teachers are mandated. As many of you know, special education staffing and programming is sort of fluid. It's all based on the federal protections around the needs, individual needs of our students with disabilities. So sometimes that can change even oftentimes in the middle of a fiscal year. So right now, we need the addition of two special education teachers to be in compliance with federal guidelines around staff to student ratios in our special education classrooms. So that's not really negotiable. Just, we have to do it. The English teacher is a position that we squeezed last year because of our budget crunch and really need to put back, again, not mandated necessarily, although there are recommendations for class, student-to-teacher ratios at all levels, including the high school, but it's a position that we lost and really need given COVID, given the fact that we are, our teachers are trying to navigate both in-person learning and virtual learning. It is an essential position. As you know, all students receive English all four years. So when we squeeze there, there's no chance of not increasing ratios and reducing options for our kids. So we need to restore that position. That's the only position that we feel strongly needs to be restored of several that we've been able to comfortably squeeze over the last couple of difficult budget cycles. Our anticipated health insurance increase is approximately $450,000. It is an 11% increase, which is really, really good. Our, just for you all's information, I learned this a long time ago, there's a lot of wiggle room in negotiating health insurance and as a result, we bid out our health insurance. We don't have to, but we do anyway, to keep everybody honest and competitive every single year. So we have consultants that work closely with us and it's bid out every year and this is the best, remaining with our current provider, Anthem. This was the best and given some of our high claims, individual claims, we were very pleased with the renewal increase of only 11% and that is with no changes to the richness of our benefits and our current products. So all of those things added up equal, and this is, don't have shock value because we've got a plan, but equal an addition to our current budget of approximately $3.2 million. And again, that we always start with the wish list and we narrow it down. We truly believe that these things are absolutely essential and we need to be responsible to funding them. Okay, Janelle, if you could scroll down. So now I'm going to try to make sense of our current budget and some other things, just to get you some bottom line here. So our current budget from the city with level funding, and we did intentionally remove Office on Youth and I will explain that. If you all want us to budget those together, we are certainly comfortable with that, but we haven't done that up to this point. They, we have budgeted those separately and we are dedicating a considerable amount of federal monies with approval, advanced approval, to building out the youth center and growing the program, buying equipment. So we're requesting level funding of the Office on Youth, but we did not include it in these figures and we can certainly change that if you would prefer us to just procedurally do it that way. But we would be requesting level funding of the Office on Youth and supplementing that significantly with Federal CARES Act monies to enhance learning loss and expanded school year experiences for kids during the evening and weekend hours through our youth programming. So we still have that 1.1 million dollars that, you know, we used in FY21 that you were willing to give us back, surplus from FY17 CAFR. So that's still out there. So technically, technically, level funding for us, and I know we might define it differently, would include the 12.2 plus the 1.1 that you allowed us to fill the gap last year from the surplus. So the total city funding that we received from you all minus Office on Youth last year was $13,401,263. Okay? So if you add in those additional requests that I just walked through, the 3.2 million, then minus the 1.7 in extra funds that we anticipate from the General Assembly, we come up with a total request, so we reduce it by that amount because that would be, that would be more revenue. We come up with a request for the city this year of $14,947,464. So Janelle, if you can scroll down. Okay, so sort of repeating that, here's the 1.1 that is still out there and is still a gap in our budget. The additional request, the 3.2, less the money, the new money that we're expecting from the General Assembly, which most of it is geared towards that compensation supplement of the 5% raise. The balance is $2.6 million. What we are asking you to consider is, and again, we're just being, trying to get creative, is be a willingness, a willingness to allow us to continue to cover that gap into this next year with the estimated surplus that we've been informed by Jack is going to be there for the FY18 CAFR. And then we are very optimistic that we can cover the difference, assuming that you're willing to do that, of 882,000 with savings that we have incurred this year and are projecting this year from just, you know, everything from fuel to utilities, just the things that, the savings we've had because of COVID. They're not as big as I would have anticipated, but again, everybody's stayed employed. So our biggest expenditure in our budget is always human resources and we've been able to keep everybody employed. Many people had new and revised duties and assignments, but we are very thankful that no one lost their job or had to be laid off as a result of these times. So we are, essentially, if you're willing to sort of reallocate, like we have done historically, the surplus from FY18 and our anticipated savings and that would mean that we would give it back to you. We wouldn't spend it down. We would give it back to you with the promise that you would, you know, reallocate it to us in the next fiscal year. We really could be looking at a level funding budget in terms of the city council's ability to have to bring new money to the table other than the surplus. So we're just trying to get creative and, you know, be partners in this work. So Janelle, if you could slide down a little bit more. I keep trying to do it myself and it won't work. Again, just to reiterate, the raise is recommended by the General Assembly. If we don't give it, we don't get the 1.7 million to fund it. So we're really only looking at about a couple hundred thousand dollars that we've got to find in order to give a 5% raise to all of our employees. Now, I do want to give a little caveat. Well, here, let me do it right here. The second bullet is, this is the last phase of the study. I mentioned that, that needs to be implemented for the class and comp. It's already been deferred two years for this particular group of employees. It includes positions such as nurses, maintenance, secretaries, and clerical staff in our central office, our central office administrators, security guards, and attendance officers. So I just wanted you to know the people that have been patient and have been waiting and would be the only remaining employees that have not benefited from the study to get all of our employees to the regional market averages. The other thing is, just to clarify, what we have decided to do, because we know that the raise and the class and comp implementation for those particular outlined employee classifications are big-ticket items. So our plan is to recommend to the school board that if you are in this group, this last phase, that you would either receive the 5% increase or the reconciliation with the class and comp, whichever is higher. So we're not recommending that those employees get both. And I don't know how fair that is, but, you know, in some cases, people get big raises. In other cases, they're not. It just depends on where that particular classification fell in the study, but we're not looking at, for that group of employees, both the 5% and the class and comp. We're recommending the implementation of whichever is higher for that employee's salary in this fiscal year. I think that's it. I'm happy to entertain questions. Mr. Cuffey, if you want to add anything or board members, anything that I've missed or, and board members, the expenditures and the requests for essential additions to the budget has not changed. The only thing that's changed since our last presentation to you all was just some creative thinking in terms of the information that Janelle has received regarding the surplus for FY18 and our projections for year-end savings that have materialized over the last week or so. So I think I'm done.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Would our board members have any comments?
Oh, not at this time.
None from my end, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
It looks as though I have two individuals on council that have questions.
Okay.
Um, and then Counselor Gore.
Yes. Could you, did you say the only the central office secretaries is a part of the study, not the regular secretaries?
Yeah, no, ma'am. They were all a part of the study, but the school-based secretaries, we prioritized in an earlier phase. So it's only central office secretaries because the others have already, they were covered in the previous phases.
And can you name those persons that's included again? That's not listed. Yeah, nurses, maintenance workers, not custodians, correct?
No, they were in the first round, Ms. Palam.
Central office secretaries, security officers, attendance officers, and who else?
Security guards.
The guards that, in all the schools now.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other thing is that with the special request for the special ed teachers, you use the word learning loss. Although, those teachers, an English teacher couldn't be comped out based on COVID funding?
The sped could not because the sped is not tied to learning loss. The sped is a federal requirement based on the individual needs of the students. There, I think possibly, and I'll ask Janelle for her opinion, I think possibly, yes, the English position, we might be able to, we'd have to get approval and they're getting stricter each round of CARES Act funds, but I think that we might be able to do that, ma'am. Janelle, am I incorrect or correct?
No, I think you're correct. We would definitely have to get prior approval from the state for that.
Okay.
From the state. And special ed only because it's a federal requirement? I mean, COVID didn't affect the fact that you had to hire more people in that domain?
That's exactly, exactly right, Ms. Palam. It's not related to COVID. It's related to the unique needs of the students and the individual. And as new kids come in or newly, they're newly identified as special ed, then the formula changes and we've got to rethink the ratios and we're just, we're too under right now with some pretty high need student cases.
And so, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gore.
Good afternoon. Well, I do have a few questions, Dr. Hackney. The first is, one, I want to say that's a great idea to, you know, try to use the savings like we have done the last, I think, two budget cycles and to be innovative without trying, to try to fill that gap. So my first question is, the estimate that you said, I believe you said you got it from Jack. So was that like a final figure that they're looking at based off of the audit or where did that come from?
Let me, let me, with your permission, Counselor Gore, let me ask, have Janelle, because Janelle has talked directly to Jack, and that's some relatively new information that we received this week. So let me have, I want to make sure we're correct. So Janelle, would you answer Counselor Gore's question related to the surplus?
Yes, ma'am. That is just an estimate from Jack. I have not seen a final figure either. I did ask him for his estimate of our fiscal year 18 surplus and that's the figure he gave me.
Okay. So that number could change. And if it does change, I guess, depending on how significant, do you feel like there's some wiggle room to adjust unless it's a large change in the number?
I can tell you, Mayor Gore, and again, full transparency, we are anticipating approximately a million dollars of savings based on Janelle's most recent projections updated this week. So, I mean, that's a couple hundred thousand wiggle room at this point. Now, we're close to our spending cutoff, which is, I think, tomorrow. Is that right, Janelle? Tomorrow or Friday?
Yes, ma'am, tomorrow.
So it's tomorrow, so we can, we can really tweak that over the next couple of weeks and get a better estimate and we will tell you whatever we think it's going to be. Right now, we think it's a million dollars.
Thank you. I have three more questions. So when you said the implementing the final phase and you said that there will be most likely an option either or, whichever one is higher, with the figures that's given to us, I would, I would guess that that includes everyone in each subset without them picking either or? Do you understand what I'm trying to say? So isn't there going to be some savings there because they're not going to get both categories or am I looking at this differently?
No, no, the figures that I put on the, on the presentation are correct. It's, we won't It's, we won't gain one from, from taking from another.
Explain that again?
So if somebody gets, let me go back up here.
What did you base the figures on, the raise or the comp study?
So the 1.9.
But that's my question. My question, my question is, based off of the figures for the raise, you have one number and then you have another number for the class and comp. And then you said employees are going to have to pick whichever one is highest. My question is, are those pots of money estimated with including everyone without knowing which one they would receive? And if that's the case, wouldn't there be some cost savings between those pots of money, if that's kind of clear?
It is clear for me and, and Janelle, I think, I think she's correct. I, I want to make sure you're the money person. But obviously, the 5% raise, we estimated, we estimated that cost based on all employees, right? Right, Janelle?
Yeah, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The class and comp, we included all the classifications in phase four, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So i- in theory, I think Councilor Gore is correct that in theory, so if, let's just say, you know, HR secretary, if it's more for her to get the 5% raise than what the class and comp indicated to reconcile her market average, then we will save what we estimated on her in the class and comp cost projection because she's in both.
Right. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You're right.
Okay. So, so Mayor Gore, Councilor Gore, I think you're right. I think you're right. Both of those projections were based on all employees in that category.
But you won't know which one, which, what the money, money is until after, I guess. When would you know what those savings would be? Would it be when you start the new year? When they determine which one or is this a conversation that would happen now before the new year starts? So you can get a better estimate before we adopt the budget?
I think we can figure that out because we're not giving them the choice. We're making the choice whichever is larger. So I think we could figure it out.
Okay. Then I have two other questions. So I'm switching gears from the budget. And this is more like a conversation about, I mean, impact, but it's not budget, pushing off the figures. In the past, we have talked about potentially creating classes for in-between grades because of the need to try to help students get the extra help before they progress. That's always been a desire I've heard from the schools, if I'm correct. So I wonder with what's going on with COVID, from what we haven't seen with these figures, is there money put towards trying to address that problem? Because I don't know what you guys are doing with your COVID money. I know the schools have received it. So I guess my piggyback of that is what is going on with the COVID funds? Like, how do you get to pick what they're spent on, what not spent on? And are some of these issues going to be addressed with the COVID money, if that's kind of?
That's a very good and very fair question. And initially, the guidance has been really flexible by design. It's getting more and more focused, but the one theme, Jasmine, is that it needs to be tied towards student impact, learning loss. I use that term. That's, that's their term, learning loss and the ways in which we support the consequences of COVID to those kids' education, whether that's mental health services based on traumatic experiences, whether it's extended school year, whether it's a really enhanced summer program, whether it's adding to our youth program so that we can provide tutoring and supports in the evenings and weekends. So we have formal plans already in place for the first two rounds of CARES Act monies, and I'm happy to share that with you all. And we have just made application broadly for the third round. But it's all tied towards, you know, innovative, creative approaches to fill those gaps for students as a result of, of COVID, which is why I think, I can't remember who, who suggested it, but why I think we can probably reconcile that English teacher as being, needing lower, lower staff to student ratios because we're continuing virtual and probably, you know, tie that to those monies. But I'm, I'm happy to share with you all. I don't, I'm not prepared to do it right now, but I'm happy to share with you all or even present to you our, our plan for how to, how to, how to use those monies.
Um, if I could, I mean, I'll defer to council, but if they don't want to have it during the presentation, I would like to set up a meeting with you and the chair just to have an understanding for my consent. So thank you for that. If I understand you correctly, it sounds like that example with addressing the students that might be in-between can be taken care of with innovative ways using the CARES Act funding.
Absolutely. And, and Dr. McLean is, is on the call as well. He, you know, is in charge of instruction. We are being very, very creative with how we look at those children, everything from whether we retain them, how we respond to parents who want them to have a do-over year and really looking at each student on a case-by-case basis. We don't want to punish kids because of COVID, but we also recognize that there are going to be a lot of kids that have unique needs. So, yes, we're, this is one time in my, I told my, my principals this morning in my almost forty-year career that we're going to have enough money to fill, fill any gap and programming consequence, if you will, to support students as a result of COVID than, than we've ever seen. So I'd be happy to, to, to do that for council or for you at any point in time.
All right.
The biggest pot, we're still working. We're still, we're still, we're meeting with principals twice a week to try and really focus on the best return on, on those investments, federal investments. But we can certainly share with you rounds one and two and, and what are, what we're, how, how round three is evolving.
All right. Thank you very much for answering the questions. I'll circle back with you for sure, but thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Looks like it concluded the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Well, before we adjourn, I was wondering, oh, may I say something, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Pelham, Council Pelham, I didn't see your hand.
I didn't have it up. When you said adjourn, it shocked me. But if I may, maybe if the city manager has any foresight and we just started our budget process, unfortunately, any comments on the coverage of these expenditure, I mean, this revenue transfer or whatever, or we just going to discuss it as we move along?
Well, Ms. Pelham, I, I think the, the suggestion that, that the creative suggestion that they have is something that we certainly, seriously need to look at, knowing that how we've done it the past couple of years. And in order to, I mean, the, the, the requests for new revenue would, would warrant some, some creative strategy like that if council was of the mind to fund all of the requests. And granted, as Dr. Hackney has pointed out, that 5% raise, it's, it's really about $280,000 that's needed of local dollars to make that happen. So it's not the whole 1.9 or 2 million. It's a smaller number. So that, that, I want everybody to, you know, have a little bit of comfort in it. It's not all of that. It's a small number once you do the math. So, yeah, we would need to look at that and certainly we'll have that conversation. And as, as Dr. Hackney said in the beginning, you know, we, we can come back and get back together with the council as a whole in the, in the school board to kind of see where we are. So, yeah, we're going to, we'll have those conversations, Ms. Pelham, obviously, as we work through our budget process. You know, just looking at our budget process with our increases that we, you know, our, our health insurance, and I, I'm like, think, I'm, I was sweating my $100,000 increase on my health insurance. So I'm glad I don't have a $457,000 increase, which makes me feel better. But, you know, we've got around $500,000, $600,000 of kind of play money, if you will, that we can move around if y'all, you know, talking about how you want to use that. So obviously, needs on our side, needs on their side, a creative solution is definitely going to be required. I think what's, what's put forward has been kind of consistent with what we've done in the past, the past few years. So we'll have those, we'll continue to have those conversations. And I know Dr. Hackney and I, we have some conversations. And since we're both, you know, fully vaccinated, we can do that face-to-face in a room without a mask. So according to the CDC. So we will be having those conversations, rest assured, Ms. Pelham, and, you know, thank you for the question.
Mr. Alman, may I respond? There was one thing I just wanted to share with the city council. I'm not sure, I mean, I know you're aware, but I, I, it's, it's happened so quickly that I want to make sure that we're on the same page. I know that things have been delayed this year. What, there's a time sensitivity for us with respect to employment contracts. Because as you all know, we're implementing balanced calendar this summer and teachers will start in the middle of July, students will start the end of July. We cannot wait to, and historically, we have, we don't have to. There's no law that requires this. But historically, we've entered into those arrangements with, in, with, in good faith and have not issued employment contracts until your budget process has been finalized because technically we're spending money that we don't have yet. This year, it's going to be absolutely essential that we get contracts out. Our goal is really at the latest, the middle of May. Now, the good news is we don't expect a lot of turnover. The even better news is we've got people calling us that want to work with us because of balanced calendar. So we're not terribly worried about turnover like we have historically. But it's just the, the clock is ticking. And we need to secure these people, get them to sign their contracts and know that July 25th, which is, you know, a month and a half sooner than they normally would be starting work, that, that they can comfortably know that they have a contract for next year. That will, you know, obviously, what that looks like will be dependent upon whether or not we're able to implement the class and comp and provide the 5% raise. So I don't know what that means to you all. We, our board may decide to just take the risk. I don't know. But I just wanted to plant that seed because we don't have the luxury of time like we typically do to delay contracts into June. Or in some cases, we've actually not given out contracts before teachers left us for this school year. And we really, because of balanced calendar, we need to make sure that we, we can do that. So whatever that means in terms of our next steps, we would really appreciate your consideration of that.
Just to, for, for Dr. Hackney and the members of the school board, we have our, May 11th would be when we're going to do the public hearing on the budgets. And then we would, and we have to wait seven days after that in order to adopt a budget. So if we went to the next council meeting, that would be May 25th that we could adopt a budget.
Okay. Okay.
But we're planning on doing all the budget public hearings on the 11th. And then having, you know, additional discussion after that. But so we're kind of in a timeframe. Hopefully that works for you guys.
We'll, we'll make, we'll make that work, Mark. Thank you. I, I see people's hands up. I don't know if your questions are for me.
Counselor Randolph and then Councilor Gore.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Dr. Hackney, I appreciate, I sent you some questions and comments this morning on the information that we received this morning, which wasn't the update, of course, and have listened intently on what you're saying here. I will continue to, first, let me thank Counselor Pelham for bringing up the issue of the English teacher and an alternative way to potentially fund that position. I think that we should always look at alternative ways because as I brought up to you early this morning, that I understand where you're at on the class and comp phase four implementation for 600,000. But once again, the city is not considering raises for our employees across the board because of funding and where we're at with annual audits. And we don't probably have much in our budget for any kind of public improvement. And, and the usage of 1.8 million dollars certainly is something that we're going to, as a council, probably have to speak to that effect. And I'm always pretty open to what I'm saying as being, you know, something that council is going to always have to talk about in depth and get viewpoints from everybody. But, you know, there's a lot of money in there to re, keep repaying back and the money going back and forth. So a, a, as I stand tonight, I'm not sure I can vote yes on that. And we will have to do a fair amount of deliberation and consideration. But I want to, you know, lay my cards on the table as to where I stand. I certainly, you know, I'm glad that the state is going to look at that 5% raise and that most of it will be taken over by the state. I posed a question to you this morning that you did not touch on, and that is the Health Insurance Consortium. Have you all looked at, I think the city, we are in a group of other cities with, I think it's United Health, isn't it, March?
We participate in local choice through Anthem.
Local choice, okay. Is that not something that the schools could do? And you didn't, you said you bid it out, but is that something that you've looked at doing with other schools to get more economies of scale? Because I have to agree with March, I think that's a, a huge increase. We certainly see our increases every year at the bank and other areas. But I just wondered if that was a possibility for you all to use a similar aspect of like what the city's doing with other schools?
Council Randolph, it's a great question and I'm proud to say that I have been negotiating that for 25 years. And what's unique to public schools, boys, is they're mostly female. They're oftentimes young and having babies. And, and our utilization is off the charts. I've worked in three different systems and it's been the same in every, every case. We have explored merging with county governments, city governments, merging with other, other school districts. It's all based on your utilization and we are considered, and, and fairly typically, a really unhealthy, sick organization just because of, of, of that utilization. So what would happen, and, and, and March and I had even talked about this a, a few years ago. What, what, what happens is nobody wants to partner with us because our utilization ends up making their rates go up. So there is, I, I know that there is a statewide system in North Carolina that we have begged our legislators to try to replicate and to figure out. But what, and through all of our research, it, unless you are a really healthy group, it's not going to benefit anybody in the consortium. They're going to, they're going to. And, and, and I will tell you, and, and Janelle can echo this and my board will too, because I report it to them every single year. This is a tremendous renewal. Sometimes it's 25, 26%. I'm, millions of dollars. And, and it is kind of a bargaining. You go back and forth and you reduce some benefits and you, you know, pass, pass on some of the expenses to the employees. But it, it, for, for right now, unless something has changed, there is no, no benefit to anybody else to join us because of, you know, our, our trends in utilization.
I guess you'll have to hire more men. Ha ha.
And let me tell you, I will say our HR director is, has worked really, really well and Janelle has, has too, with our consultants, because we're really focusing on some wellness initiatives. Because if we get more well as a, as an entire group, we're going to deal with this every single year.
Right. That was my next thing was that maybe, you know, doing some of the things that, I mean, my bank even went so far as we have a gym in it. Not that I'm using it at this point, but they do. And we have our own primary care outlet at the bank. I mean, we've done a lot of things as a bank to. I mean, we've done a lot of things as a bank to lower our, um, capacity for, um, sickness and, uh, poor health. So, um, you know, maybe that would help, but, uh, thank you for answering that. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have, uh, Mayor.
Thank you. And I will hand it right back to you, um, Mr. Cuffy.
Okay. Um, first of all, I just would, would like to thank, um, Mayor Bennett and the whole city council for your continued support of our students and our staff. Uh, because you, year in and year out, we go back and forth, but we always work it out. So it's no question, I'm not concerned about working it out. Not because y'all have such a giving heart and I just want to say I appreciate, we appreciate it. I, I can't speak for everybody, but I will at this time. Uh, we appreciate everything you do. And like you say, I've been in that position before and it's not an easy position to be in. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Cuffy?
Yes.
I don't know if it's by accident, but, um, Ms. Counselor Denton had her hand up.
I'm, I was just going to thank you all for being here tonight and having this meeting. And, um, quite enlightening. And hopefully we can work all of these issues out and I think we will. But thank you again for your presentation and for everybody being here. And if we're done, I'll make a motion, the meeting be adjourned.
Second. Ms. Bass, roll call.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yeah.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have a vote of seven to zero to adjourn.
Six and zero.
Six, zero, sorry. My math is bad tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cuffy. Do you have to do the same on your end?
Uh, well, I guess we can, by the formality. Please, uh, Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn. So.
Second.
Second.
Move by Mr. Johnson, second by, I'm sorry, move by Mr. Griffin, second by Ms. Johnson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Reber?
Yes.
Ms. Heisler?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Cuffy?
Yes.